Regular Board of Trustees meeting at 6:30 PM. We have a roll call, please.
Asherol?
Here.
Swedek?
Here.
Augustine? Here, and we'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Okay, we have a bunch of meeting minutes to run through. Do you guys have all of them in front of you?
Yes.
First set is the 7/26/2022 special meeting minutes. That was for a purpose of a work session. And I just have one minor change on the bottom of, under me, on page three of four. It says trustee Augustine, number one. And I just wanted to add that I said that I would email my topics to all of you for consideration as I was leaving for that doctor's appointment. Does everyone agree to that?
Yep.
Very good. Any other changes to 7/26?
No.
Okay, very good. And we'll just keep moving on to the next set, which I believe is the August 23rd special meeting. Oh, sorry, you know what? We have another one.
July 12th, right?
That was July 26th.
August 9th.
Then you've got August 9th. I was not here for that meeting. Did you have any changes to August 9th meeting?
I don't.
Okay, so we will leave those alone. August 23rd was another special meeting for the purpose of a work session. There are some minor changes that Lynn had made. Looking to see, does anyone have any other changes to that?
I do not.
I have a change on page three of six, under trustee Asherol, number three. We were talking about the ARPA grant funds. And it says currently trustee Augustine would like to do her due diligence looking into information available on the website and previous. And that just doesn't sound right to me.
Where is it?
Number three.
Okay, I have three of five.
Under trustee Asherol, so this section here. Trustee Augustine would like to do her due diligence. And I'd like to add of determining what the township would like to utilize the funds for. And then cross out looking at the information available on the website and previous. And then I had one other change on the bottom of page five of six. And that's number seven. We were discussing the work sessions. Martha, I'm going to say it's like the fourth line. It says trustee Augustine no longer can do these during the day. It would have to be after 5:00 PM. And I just want to add, but I stated that I wasn't certain about that timeframe either. Does anyone else have any other changes to those minutes?
Nope.
Nope.
Very good. Martha, do you have any questions before I exit out of that screen?
No.
Okay. And then the last set that I have, Martha, and correct me if I'm wrong, is the last trustee regular meeting, which is August 16th.
There's also the special meeting I sent.
Yes, that's right. I have it here. You're right. And that was for the August 23rd. There were two special meetings. Did anyone have any changes to that set of minutes that Martha sent over today?
That was just the purchase of the Ford interceptors.
And the amended certificate. Yeah. Okay, August 16th meeting. Does anyone have anything they would like to change? I have a couple of things.
I do not.
I do not.
Okay, page two. Ms. Augustine indicated the Historical Society has requested the building be painted and asked Mr. Bahari to schedule. Says she thanked the Service Department for their work on trimming trees and additional work at the Historical Society. I just want to mention here that we had received a note from the Historical Society thanking the township for their services.
Do you want to put on behalf of the Historical Society?
Perfect, that would be perfect.
Okay.
And then on page four. Just let me know when you're ready, Martha. Second paragraph. It was determined that Ms. Asherol and Mr. Swedek would be added as authorized user on the newsletter account. I said I would look into it. I didn't say that we for sure would be able to do that.
Okay, I'll just delete that then.
Okay, and then same page, one, two, three. The fourth paragraph down, Ms. Augustine for the trustees, she had requested OHM advisors amend their previously submitted comprehensive plan audit memorandum to address senior housing. She feels that the amended memorandum better aligns with survey results. Excuse me, the reason I reached out to them that I specifically said in that meeting was because we had said publicly as a board that we did not agree that the survey results aligned. And that after I received the meeting minutes, I felt that that was stated at that as well. So I'm looking for way to.
Do you want to say that, I mean, so what we don't do in the meeting minutes, they're not transcripts.
I understand that.
They're not verbatim. So I think what you, if you just want to add better alliance with the survey results as indicated in the meeting minutes.
Perfect.
Okay.
It's just hard because it was a PDF and I couldn't put in what I would like to see in there.
Well, you can copy it out and write on it. I can, you know, that's fine too for me.
And then after the fifth paragraph, same page. I would like it noted here that I was not spoken to well by trustee. I was called unprofessional.
You know what?
And disrespectful.
I am not getting into that because if I do that, then it goes for all parties. And I do not want to be in that position.
But name.
These are meeting minutes and they are reflection of what occurs during the meeting.
But if it's not in there, it's not transparent, which is something that we work to achieve here. And I know a lot of people have questions about the meeting because.
This is a discussion for the board here.
Trustees?
And the minutes, in my opinion, should just reflect the business at hand.
So that wasn't part of the business at hand?
None in my opinion.
Okay, trustee Asherol?
I've said before, I think that these are supposed to be cliff notes, not verbatim.
Understood. Page five. Where we were looking at the estimate cost for water coming into town center, one, two, three down Route 303 heading east and then south down Ridge to the fire station. In my email is actually 3,100 feet. And I think it's typed here 5,100 feet.
Your 3,100 is above?
Yeah, I went back and looked at the email.
Okay, it was handwritten, so I'll pull those. I will change them. But I took them exactly from your.
Okay.
From your.
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me.
So it might have, I think that might have been handwritten or perhaps not. But I'll verify that.
Any other changes to these minutes? Trustees?
I'm good.
None by me.
Okay. So at this time, I would like to make a motion to approve the special meeting minutes from July 26, 2022. Two sets of special meeting minutes from August 23, 2022. Regular meeting minutes for August 16, 2022.
As amended?
As amended. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, and by Swedek, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then I'll have one of you make a motion for the special meeting minutes from August 9, 2022. Because I wasn't here, so I have to abstain.
Make a motion to accept the minutes from the August 9 special meeting as amended.
I don't think there was any amendments.
Without amendment.
Yes, you're okay on that one?
Second.
All right, so we'll do a roll call for the first motion. Asherol?
Yes.
Swedek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Abstain.
No, well, I'm sorry. We never, you never did a roll call for the first.
Oh, I did all in favor.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
Okay, are we squared away now? Or do you want to do a roll call for that, the ninth? Are we good?
No, you're good with it. I'm good with it.
Very good. We will move right over to the Police Department. We have Sergeant Shrohl with us this evening. Welcome.
Well, how's it going?
Good.
Good evening. I've just got one thing. I'd like to request trustee approval to hire Shelby Palia as a full-time probationary patrol officer with a starting pay rate at Class 1 of the collective bargaining agreement, which is currently $24.89 an hour. Upon completion of six months, we'd like to move her to the Class 2 at $29.94. And upon completion of her one year, she would move to Class 3 at $32.57. This would be with a tentative starting date of October 2, 2022. So moved.
Second.
Asherol?
Yes.
Swedek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes. Can you tell us a little bit about her experience coming into the?
Shelby will be coming from the Cleveland Clinic Police Department. I believe she has approximately four years of experience there. Met with her several times. We really like her and think she'll be a great asset for the Police Department.
Wonderful, thank you.
There's no end date on there, right? No end date.
They're finally signing in blood now.
Definitely not after second of an end date.
Oh, yes.
Anything else, Sergeant Shrohl? How are your floors over there?
They are completed. Feel free to stop over and check them out. They came out great.
Very good.
Last week, we moved all of our stuff around, cleaned up, and are back to using the space again.
Very good. Great. Thank you.
Thanks for joining us.
Does anybody else have anything?
That's not just work.
It's a common occurrence lately. You're like a part of the group.
Well, welcome. We love having you.
More fun during the day, though.
Does anyone in the audience have anything for Sergeant Shrohl? All right, you are free to go. Thank you for being here this evening.
Have a great, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Be safe.
Chief Grossenbach for fire?
Good evening. I have a couple items. The first is request appropriations for $75 through Ohio EPA for a burn slash demolition permit for the live burn we're going to be conducting tentatively October 1 and 2 on a property here in Hinkley for training purposes.
So moved.
Second.
Asherol?
Yes.
Swedek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
The board signed the contract that was drafted by Brian Richter for our SCBA's. We had the owner of Fire Safety Services sign it, witness it. I need two witnesses from the audience to sign this contract that the trustees signed so we can move forward with the purchase of our SCBA's from the FEMA grant. So two.
Want to step up and sign the?
Martha, can I steal your pen? Thank you.
Thank you. Just, are you going to put down the credit card, the EPA debt?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, we got to sign up through their eBiz.
Okay.
We're going to start that tomorrow because I heard it takes.
A while?
Yeah, a while.
Yeah.
And we need to do it 10 days before the burn. So I want to make sure we're just done. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
The only other item I had was I do not have the updated price. Williams had their supply chain misquoted the drums, the brake drum parts on the brakes for the engine. I called and left a voicemail to hear back from him today to find out the updated price, but they have not got back to me today.
It's probably going down, right?
No.
Like everything.
As much as I would like to say so. No. That is all I have.
Any word on the levy committee?
We met, we had our first formal committee meeting two weeks ago now. We're going to be scheduling another one here shortly. And I had a residence reach out about a possible fundraiser for efforts. She said when she gets back from her honeymoon, she would be contacting us to look into the possibilities of the levy. And then the only other thing is we have a blood drive this week. Saturday, it'll be at the old fire station since its temperatures are cooling down and we can do that. So I'll be setting up. I got all the paperwork over to Suzanne, but blood drive. And then Sunday is our Tunnel to Tower run. We will be running, there's a team of, thank you for signing up back there. We have a team of about 20 that are raising. We are currently the highest group again in fundraising efforts for it. Tunnel to Towers serves veterans and first responders who have been either killed or seriously injured in line of duty. And the lieutenant from Wayne County that was struck and killed, his family will be there speaking for the Tunnel to Tower Foundation. So it's going to be a rain, but it'll be a nice, cool run this weekend.
I saw no rain. It's going to be nice and clear for you.
I'm okay if it's raining. I'll take, I will definitely take a little sprinkle. I don't mind that. But we, there's a bunch of members that will be doing it in full turnout gear. I will be doing it again in full turnout gear with an air pack on for the run.
Thank you. Thank you for joining.
Thank you. That's all I have.
And then did we want to take this opportunity also to ask any community members?
Oh, for the levy, yes. As I extended the offer two weeks ago, I think, at the last meeting. If anybody's interested in being a part of the levy committee, please feel free to either call me or email me to be a part of it. We're slowly getting everything going and we need some help getting the word out and spreading the word of the need for the levy.
Very good. And you have Touch a Truck coming up.
Touch a Truck is the last Sunday in September.
Which is the 25th?
25th or 26th. 25th, the rope team will not.
Do you take a break in October?
No, we're burning the house down in October. So we're just going to keep going. And I got another live burn at the end of October too for Career Center. Full speed ahead to the end of the year.
Is Maddie making an event for that, like a?
Yes, yeah, yep. Yeah, Jen was working on the flyer for it. But it was a large, it was a large event last year. We're having some new events for the kids there this year. We're taking, we're moving different events around to change it up and all that.
Keep it interesting.
Yes, it will be.
They liked going up in the trees.
Yeah, unfortunately, that will not be here this year because the rope team has a class they're teaching. So I, because I already inquired about that because that one's usually a big hit of kids going up in the trees. But we're not, unfortunately, this year, no ropes. But breaking down doors is the next option for the kids.
The paint's dead, right?
Very good. Thank you, chief. Does anyone else have anything for Chief Grossenbach? Anyone from the audience have anything for Chief Grossenbach? Okay.
Thank you very much. Guys, have a good night. Be safe.
You too.
Thanks, chief.
Mr. Bahari from the Service Department.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Good.
The first thing I have in my list, request for appropriations to purchase track sealant materials through DJL Material and Supply Inc. At a cost of $10,782.50. This is, we were trying to average about seven pallets a year now. So we have one left this year and this will be the order for next year. So hopefully we can stay on track with that.
So moved.
Second.
Asherol?
Yes.
Swedek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Second is request resolution to enter into a contract with Cargo Inc. For the purchase of road salt at a cost of $49.87 per ton of salt. And then obviously, you know, we can go 10% over of the total that we ordered, which was 1,000 tons. Or we can go to the 10% under for the minimum, which is 900.
What was the rate?
$49.87 per ton.
So moved.
Second.
Asherol?
Yes.
Swedek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
And that's about all I have for tonight.
I can't believe we're talking salt.
The next month will be getting the trucks.
And we've got a date for Valley Brook.
The 16th.
Okay. Very good. Are we going to be sending out more letters or doing anything with the bus garages? I think that's Brunswick School District over there.
We can notify them. I mean, we just have, like I said, we have the PR signs up and now, you know, I welcome people to call in with questions if they have any, so.
Very good. Thank you. Does anyone else have anything for Mr. Bahari?
I'm going to do these other two wellies here. Moving forward, taking another shot at the fire station wall with an adjusted estimate. So make a motion to adopt resolution requesting bids for a construction project to the east wall of the old fire station for the purpose of renovation and energy efficiency improvements. This sealed bid event will be advertised in Medina Gazette on Friday, September 9, 2022. Sealed bids must be received by 12:00 PM on September 20, 2022 at the Hinkley Township Administration Building, 1410 Ridge Road, Hinkley, Ohio 44233. And will be opened at 6:31 PM during the September 20, 2022 regular trustee meeting. Bid forms and specifications can be obtained in person during regular scheduled administration office, building office, during the regular scheduled administrative building office hours and are also available on the township website at www.hinkletwp.org. The architect's estimate for this project is $80,000.
Second.
Asherol?
Yes.
Swedek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes. And that's the base bid? We decided that we would just do the structural elements, correct?
No, we looked at that and there was literally negligible cost savings to do that. So that's for the whole job.
$80,000, okay. Very good. And that's.
We need to find somebody who's hungry.
So you said opening bid is the 20th?
Correct.
Do we need, do we have a meeting aligned with that?
There's a regular meeting.
Perfect. Do we want to just, we're going to open at the beginning of the meeting?
Correct.
Very good. At 6:30.
He said 6:30.
One.
So it is.
I'm just making a mental note, so I am ready for that. Very good. Anything else, trustees?
Yes, I have another one. Make a motion to adopt a resolution requesting sealed bids for Bethany Lane roadway improvements in Hinkley Township, Medina County, Ohio. Improvements include removal and replacement of existing concrete pavement sections and storm structure replacements at the north end of Bethany Lane in Hinkley Township. Sealed bids must be received by 12:00 PM on September 20, 22 at Hinkley Town Hall at 1410 Ridge Road, Hinkley, Ohio. Bids will be opened at 6:34.
5?
6:35 during the September 20, 22 regular trustee meeting. The engineer's estimate is $262,119 for this project.
You need to put your bid date, your Gazette, your advertising date. You didn't say that.
I did not. The sealed bid event will be advertised Medina Gazette on Friday, September 9, 2022.
They tailored the specs.
So it's 200 and how much?
262,119. We had to stay below, we need to stay below 291. So that's what the engineers engineered it at.
Very good.
That portion.
Second.
All right, Asherol?
Yes.
Swedek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes. Very good. Moving right on.
And we did, we did the salt. No.
You got it all?
20th, same day as the east wall.
6:31 and 6:35. Very good. Does anyone from the audience have anything? Mr. Larson?
I just want to thank Mr. Bahari for the great care that he exercised in doing all the mowing and trimming along the sides of car roads, both sides. And I don't know if you've been somebody before, but whoever did it before you, like me, was a different person. They did equally as well. There's a lot of expensive landscaping along there. Not on my property anyway. And you're really, it's not an easy thing to do to avoid the expensive stuff and give the crap stuff on both sides. But you really did a great job, as did the person who did it prior to you. So.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
It's not just him, it's his guys too.
Under his direction and leadership. Yeah. I have one quick question. Do we know we paid last year for salt, per ton?
$40 and.
97 cents or something like that.
Yeah, I can't remember.
$40.
It was lower.
Maybe a 20% increase.
Yeah, it's significant.
And approximately, how many tons did you use here?
Since we've been here. So on average, so when I averaged everything up, we're right around 900 tons. The 10-year average was right around 1,600 tons. So 1,600.
Mr. Bahari has done a very good job of streamlining that and cutting costs for our township.
Well, we've also, it's winter dependent too. We've had some pretty.
It's all dependent on winter.
Yeah.
It's getting warmer, so. And again, our guys, we do, we try to manage the best we can, so.
I would like to add that last week, you went up and down King Road mowing and did an excellent job. They actually pulled it backwards down the road like three or four times.
Yeah.
In front of, at the beginning.
Yeah. Second cut backwards, trying to push it back a little bit. You'll see some trees getting trimmed, but we're not getting too carried away.
The road is clean.
Yeah.
Very good.
Good, thank you.
Wow. Are you sure you want to go? Maybe you want to stay. If no one has anything else for Mr. Bahari, you are free to go. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to move right into zoning. I don't know if you've been able to attend the last couple zoning commission meetings. They had a work session last Tuesday as well as a regular meeting on Thursday. And one of the things that they had brought up was nuisances. And this is something that we've been working on internally in our zoning department for some time. As you are familiar with the 25 River Road, Prosecutor's Office had asked us to get back to him right away on that. Took us a little bit and we sent word to him that we wanted to go ahead and pursue it. And I still have not heard back from him. So one of the things internally that we talked about doing was hiring Trina. And I don't know how to pronounce her last name, Devani, at a rate of $190 an hour. Trina used to be a civil prosecutor for 10 years in Medina. She works with Montville, Sharon Township, Lafayette and Medina Township. She typically has a rate of about $250 to $300 an hour, which as we now know, that is pretty average for most lawyers in this area. She does reduce it as for municipalities to 190 an hour. So I wanted to see if you were in agreement to utilize her to pursue nuisances so that we can work a little bit quicker on them. so that we can work a little bit quicker on them. Uh, the other thing that we would like to hire her for is the zoning commission has asked that we bring in a consultant or counsel to assist in design standard language for the zoning resolution. And so I thought I'd kind of piggyback both of them at the same time.
I have not heard anything to the effect that, uh, county prosecutor's office was ineffective in what they're doing. Um, I talked with Tom Wilson. He said he hasn't had any issues either. Uh, I do know a little bit of history about this attorney and her being non-responsive in the past to the township. So that gives me pause right there as far as this specific attorney. But I would rather stay with the prosecutor's office myself.
Okay. And to work on the design standards with the zoning commission as well?
Sure. If there's something that they can't do, then, then we can look at outside. But to just reach outside to begin with, I, I think it behooves us because we're going to send whatever we come up with to them for a review anyway.
To the prosecutor's office?
Prosecutor's office.
Well, we wouldn't. We would just utilize her. She's very efficient and effective in base of my conversations with the other townships that she works with.
I would rather stick with the prosecutor's office myself.
Okay. Trustee Asherle, do you have an opinion on either one of those topics?
Um, on the, on the first one, um, with the nuisance complaints, I would echo that thought of to continue to use the prosecutor's office. Um, with the zoning resolution, I'm not opposed to using, um, someone to advise in that, but I do think for best steps to begin with, maybe start with the prosecutor's office and maybe the prosecutor's office will say, you know what, maybe if you look at someone outside who can just kind of specialize and get back to you in a timely manner, if you're saying that you're having issues with them getting back to you in a timely manner.
Well, and too, we, you know, we have hired consultants in the past. So George Smurklin was someone we had hired. We just hired OHM, which, you know, not everyone was very pleased with. So we don't have a large pool of consultants to work with. So we thought counsel might be a smarter option because they know the law as much better than, than our consultants do. And they often can see the loopholes before they are created.
Has Marcus reached out to the prosecutor yet to talk to him about any of this?
About design standards. They don't typically help with that type of language when it comes to a text amendment. They will read through a text amendment, um, that is put together and presented to them. But when it comes to design standards, this is something that it's more consultant or counselor who has worked with that specifically before.
Okay. I mean, I would, I would say have Marcus reach out to the prosecutor and say, hey, this is what we're looking at. Do you advise that we go with the consultant or use them? That's what I would say.
Or if they do recommend going elsewhere, recommendation on a good legal source as opposed to someone that there's been an issue with in the past.
Yeah. How did you find?
Yeah, I've not heard of an issue in the past at all. Actually, um, I've heard that she's fantastic. What was the issue in the past?
It was, was it an abandoned property?
We had, we had hired Trina Devaney in 2015 for the Bellis Road house. And she, she was approved by resolution. And then I, I really don't know what happened, but she didn't respond to emails or calls and never followed through on the project.
Okay.
And again, I don't know if there was a personal issue or, or what, but the, she did not respond to. I know she has a very good track record with Montville. And so I was as surprised by that as, I, I think, I think it was Dave Sambor, Ray Schulte, and myself all retained her.
Okay.
To deal with a nuisance property. And again, I, I do not know the circumstances because I never received any replies to my calls or emails.
Okay.
So again, I can't speak to that, but.
Mr. Pearl, seems that you have something.
Richard Pearl, 1785 King Road. In 2003, trustee Bill Horton offered resolution G22403I to contract with Hogan Meyer Design Group at a cost not to exceed $4,750. PDG proposed to provide professional landscape architectural engineering and planning services to assist the township with preparation of a conceptual streetscape plan for State Route 303 and State Route 94, uh, east to the school property and west to the end of the guardrail, north to the First Merit Bank, and south to the first driveway past the township driveway. That's a quote. I would request the, the trustees review the results of that plan and report back to the residents before moving forward, hiring Trina, uh, on establishing new text regarding design standards for the zoning resolution.
Well, it would be the zoning commission that would look at those minutes. Obviously, I would look at them just out of capacity sake, but.
And the conceptual, uh, streetscape plan is probably still relevant 19 years later. It shouldn't be too hard to extrapolate it a little further, a little beyond First Merit Bank or what now is the post office, or a little further down to the fire station.
Very good. Thank you. What was the dates? What was the dates that you said?
2003, 19 years ago.
That, uh, the, the only result of that, um, was the Bradford or the, whatever, the ornamental pears that were planted along the road. And, and then it was picking up steam and moving forward. But what, what kind of delayed and halted it was ODOT, if you can recall, ODOT then proposed the big intersection change and adding more lanes to it. And then that went on for several years of back and forth and, and debate on that. But yeah, to Mr. Pearl's point, that conceptual plan shows, you know, a big getting rid of all the wires, the lighting on the street, the, the light, the stoplight, you know, changes, modifications in that. And it likely is very pertinent.
If we already spent 5,000, close to $5,000, then I think that should be looked at.
Yeah. I, I mean, I agree it's pertinent. I think that they are trying to make more design standards for each individual business that's coming in. Um, but certainly that
But that's the beginning.
Will be, yeah, be a starting point.
In 2003 money.
2003 money, correct. I think it was paid for.
It was. It was paid for. My recollection.
Okay. So I'm going to continue on the zoning education will be provided to all of our zoning personnel by Medina County Planning Commission on September 21. This is not an open meeting because it's a training. Um, we do have some members of our zoning personnel that will not be able to attend in person or virtually. They have prior commitments. So I wanted to see if it was okay with you if we recorded it and offered it, them the opportunity to view the recording as their education because they have a, they have two educations that they have, are required to take for the year.
Mm-hmm. I'm fine with that.
We'll be recording by then anyways. So they'll be able to view it on YouTube.
Very good. So that's, yes, thank you. And I don't have anything for cemetery. So we'll move right over to trustee Asherle.
Okay. Um, so you guys got the communication from the prosecutor, right, about the Kimball forms?
Yes.
So just to, I don't know if there's confusion, so let me just say to clear up confusion in case there is any confusion of, um, the vacant forms that were being used. If there is a vacant property, and, and this goes back to, um, a couple of, maybe a month ago, we said if it's a vacant property or the commercial exemption, they do not have to reapply every single year. And they do. The vacancy, they don't come to the township for a vacancy. That is written in the contract. If there's a vacant property, they have to go to Kimball to get that granted, not here at the township. And then the commercial exemption is if you own a business in town, you don't have to use Kimball. However, the commercial exemption form was being used. Uh, if you have a business in town and a residence in town, your, your residence is exempt from the trash. So you don't have to, um, you're automatically exempt. If you have a business in town and your residence is in town, you don't have to pay for the trash pickup. That is not how it is. So if, let's just say the Greensmith or Asherle Studio or SNS, if they want to bring their trash to their business, that's going to come out of that 5% opt-out number. It's not being done that way now. So my recommendation is I think we should have Lynn start calling the people who are on that commercial exemption list right now. They're not paying for trash pickup at their home because they're bringing it to their business. I think we should have Lynn contact all of those people and let them know that they are going to have to go through the normal opt-out process that everybody else goes through.
I don't see any problem with that.
Good. Okay. That was just to ensure that we were all on the same page moving forward with that. Then he did send the updated letter. You guys probably didn't even have a chance to look at that yet.
Um, it looks good to me.
Okay. Did you get a chance? All right. So with his, with his, uh, with his edits, then we can go ahead and print what we already made the motion for, to print everything. Perfect. All right. And then just a reminder to our residents that because of the holiday, Kimball will be delayed by one day. So pickup will be on Saturday, September 10th this week, not Friday. Um, then we've got a bunch of website stuff to discuss. First of all, I have banner versus pop-up on the website. Just so you're both aware of that, when Proximity came and talked to us, I had asked them, can we do like a banner that we can add in there in case there's, you know, trash is delayed by a day or anything like that. So they gave us options of pop-ups and banners. A pop-up would be another plugin. So there would be a cost for it. And Lynn brought up a very good point of a lot of people have pop-ups blocked on their computer. So we decided, all right, let's just go with the banner and the banner's free. So we're just going to go with the simple banner. Um, so that was kind of an FYI for you both because you did not see that in that meeting. Um, now we talked about, this is more for all of our residents, so you understand what we're talking about. Um, that one-time fee for the ADA compliance and also it's going to be what creates that search navigation in the top of the website. That's going to be $55 one time. So I would like to make a motion to pay Equal Web $55 for a one-time fee to maintain the ADA compliance and search navigation of the website.
Same.
Yeah, Asherle?
Yes.
Swedek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Um, the calendar plugin, our calendar for the new website, the updated website is, um, much more sophisticated than what we have right now. And that's going to be a plugin also. We've talked about it a couple of different times at the meetings. But, so you are aware that will also be an annual cost of $79 to use that calendar plugin. So I would like to make a motion, um, to purchase the calendar plugin for the updated website at an annual cost of $79.
Who are we purchasing it from? I'll tell you in a second. We're purchasing the ADA compliant.
Through Equal Web?
Equal Web.
Through Equal Web, correct. Okay.
That is through Equal Web.
These calendars are awesome.
I know. But you know what? That's going to be a great calendar.
Will there be pictures on the calendar?
Will there be pictures on the calendar?
Yeah. Thank you.
Um, okay.
There'll be buzzards.
None. Somebody just asked about that on Facebook. They said that we need to have a buzzard thing that you could go to and take a picture with.
Oh.
And I said, we have a beautiful stained glass here.
Yeah.
So if anybody here wants a picture with a buzzard for your Facebook profile or something, we've got it here.
Do you not remember the residents and the buzzard last year?
The actual buzzard, the real?
She wanted to complain about the name.
Is it through Proximity?
No, it's through Web and Us.
Okay.
All one word.
I remember that.
Web and Us?
Web and Us? Web and Us?
W E.
We have W E and U S.
And U S.
Web and Us. Thank you. Web and Us.
Okay. So, um, seconded as amended. Asherle?
Yes.
Swedek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Okay. Um, this is going to be kind of an insurance policy also. So if you recall from when they came out initially to do their presentations, we will get a training, um, like a training class on the new website once they give us the keys to it. It was just explained to me that that is a one-hour training session. They have never gone over the one hour in the past, but they think it's possible this time we could go over with questions. Um, and it goes up to $125 an hour once they exceed that first hour. So I thought better safe than sorry. Make a motion to pay Proximity Marketing a price not to exceed $125 for additional website training.
I see here that you have, um, that the website exceeds our current budget. Do you want to talk about that and then maybe kind of roll them into one motion?
Uh, no.
Okay.
It's, it's sent far, I think, this way.
So that's for two hours then?
This is for the additional. So the first hour's free, second hour will be $125.
Okay. Second. Asherle?
Yes.
Swedek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Okay. And to piggyback on top of that point also, the training is tentatively scheduled right now for September 20th at 10:00 AM. It is going to be a Zoom and we said we are going to record the meeting. That way, if anybody, um, can't make it, they can go back and view the meeting. But then also for when they're going over edits, like Suzanne and Lynn or anybody at the fire department, the police department, things that you don't change often, you might forget how to change, you'll be able to access and go back to the recorded meeting. So you can see that.
Very good.
All right. Now, the dreaded budget word. We are over budget with Proximity Marketing right now, which is fine. They're moving on. They expect to launch next week. Um, Melissa, we got the edits that you had sent last week. She said for Proximity to take care of all of these edits, that would, we would have to increase the budget up to $3,000 for all these edits. Now, that being said, um, some of these in here, I, I agree with you, they've been overlooked. And some of these I thought were really good suggestions. I talked to Suzanne about it this morning and Lynn when we were, um, on with Proximity. And a lot of this stuff, they feel they can, they can make the edits too, once we get the keys to the website.
You mean Lynn can. It's like entirely we.
Entirely, yeah.
I'm just clarifying.
Yeah. Lynn, yeah, Lynn and Suzanne, which, you know, we'd already talked about the fact that Lynn's going to be doing a heavier lift on the website because that's more her specialty. And that's what she had come to me and asked in the spring. So Lynn's going to be doing a lot of it. But obviously Suzanne is here more hours than Lynn. So Suzanne will be assisting Lynn. We're kind of thinking that maybe it's going to take a week or so once we have the training. So just so everybody is aware, the website is, the updated website will launch next week, probably Tuesday. I mentioned to them, um, Wednesday would be kind of a slower website traffic day since it's the day after a meeting, but it is going to launch next week. We will not have, you know, the keys to the website or the training to be able to make edits to it. They want to wait a week. So if you go on there and if you're confused by something or if you see something that's not accurate, it's temporary. It's going to be updated as soon as we get, um, the training and we know how to do everything on it. So I know you're all excited, bated breath, bated breath at the website. I think it looks really, really nice. So we're excited. Excited to launch it. So are we moving on from that? We're good with not increasing the budget, letting, uh, Lynn and Suzanne take over the edits?
I thought that was the intention all along to have something that we could modify in-house.
Mm-hmm.
So if they can do that, yes.
Okay. I'm just concerned that some of them, they won't be able to do. But Linda sure do that. She's going to be able to do them all.
Um.
I guess that would be a question for.
She didn't say all.
After the training.
Yeah. She didn't say all.
Because we just saw the website for the first time. And so that was the first time I, and I apologize for not getting it to you sooner, but it was the first time Suzanne and I could sit down and kind of collectively go through and like what I didn't see, she did. It's always better to have two sets of eyes. Um, and so, I mean, what was our timeframe with the contract?
I don't know that there was a, it's all, it was really the porting over everything. It was porting over all the information because there was so much information on the old website.
Right.
And then we've gone back and forth and said, ah, can you do this? Can you do this? So it was, it was a lot of the, um, data that got moved over that. I get the impression kind of broke the budget because she was calling me back in July saying, do we need all this? Do we need more than two years worth of everything? And I said, no, because website's secondary source. So if you've already spent that kind of time porting everything over, I'm like, just stop now with the meeting minutes and the agendas and things like that that were beyond the two-year mark.
Okay.
And if there's things that they can't do, there are options that we can do later, kind of like an ad hoc. I spoke with Chief Sentner last week and he was, he had mentioned I spoke with Chief Sentner last week and he was, he had mentioned that um, he'd been looking at other cities' websites and their, specifically their police page. And he, there are things that he wants to incorporate into his page that is going to be a heavier lift. So he said he would, I talked to Martha about this, said he will dip into his budget to use proximity as like an ad hoc if that's the route they're going to do. We have Detective Kenny who's very um, familiar with websites and also Sergeant Trolle. So they were going to kind of join us at the training and see what they can do and what maybe they need to pay proximity for.
Okay. I just think that some of those things were really necessary. So as long as we can tackle them in some, some capacity.
Which one, well, because you, you're not going to be able to be here on Tuesday next week, right? So we can't go through this. Which ones do you have this? Have you had?
I don't have it in front of me. I can pull it up. And I think it took me longer to type it than it took me to find it on the. So Lynn will be able to go in and change those tabs. Right now they're all in alphabetical order, but they, they don't make sense to somebody like me who kind of knows the hierarchy of things.
No, I don't.
So for instance, like under, would she be able to change government to administration? Would she be able to then change those tabs underneath so they coincide?
Um, I'm, to rename a tab, I'm sure she can do if, if that's what we said we wanted to do. Um, if that's what the board decides to do. Now you're saying reorder these?
Yeah. That's what I kind of, we, we said that maybe this would be a better way of um, utilizing the directories, kind of putting them in that order before they were in alphabetical order. But I, we thought that the ones like, people are going to go to certain ones first. And then instead of doing the payment listing, we had suggested doing the checkbook.ohio.gov.
Yeah, Suzanne mentioned that to me today.
Yeah.
I thought that was um, worthy of a discussion with the board. I mean, I, I, she had mentioned completely removing it. And I said, I would not completely remove it. I could see just having the link on there. So it's not something that's getting loaded on every two weeks.
Yeah. But then like specifically zoning, there were probably three extra tabs that we could just completely remove or combine. So I, as long as Lynn thinks she can do these things, um, I have no problem with. Having them tackle it.
Well, maybe um, because we'll have Lynn and Suzanne and it will be up, we can discuss this at work session. So we're not, because we have this whole list from Melissa. So we will table this till work session. Um, so a lot of those photos, I don't know if either of you had the chance to look at the photos that we put into Dropbox. And some of those were beautiful, like that snowy cabin. They tried to have that on there. The resolution is not good enough. So I just emailed you both before the meeting. You probably have not seen it yet. Um, someone from in-house proximity went out this weekend and got a couple of photos that they could use on the website.
Those were the lake photos?
The lake photos.
Yeah, I saw them.
Um, the photographer just says, um, we need to have his name in the photo. So he wanted to put his name in the bottom corner of it. I didn't think that seemed like a big deal, so.
Big deal.
Okay, so we are approving. Jack, are you good on that?
Yes.
I think it would be cute to have some type of contests to like have high school students or citizens be a part of a photo contest for the website.
I agree with you. Um, I, you had said something like that and Martha had said something like that also. Uh, you know, maybe bringing back, back in eighties township used to have um, you know, the best decorated Christmas, you know, best, best house for Christmas. And maybe pick like three houses. And the three houses that win, we showcase their homes on the front page, you know, Halloween. I mean, like Walden Pond goes all out for Halloween. So you know, doing something like that for Halloween, I think that would drive usage to the website. And I think that would be something to get kind of excited about for the community. So I think that that is definitely something we can revisit. Right now, let's just launch it. So.
True, you could have a poll of the month calendar.
You could.
My idea was not that weird. Same.
Um.
You're not getting on it.
He wants his name in the corner too.
I did, you both um, should have received an email last week. I added both of you and Lynn and Suzanne on as authorized users for YouTube. Um, because we will start then next week recording our meetings and posting to YouTube. And I did figure out how we're going to do this. We're going to have to download the YouTube app on the iPad and then record the meeting. As soon as the meeting is over, you can just hit upload to YouTube. And then Lynn or Suzanne the next day can log into Zoom, get the recording and save it to a hard drive. So that way we don't have to have our contractors do anything. And that takes me to my next point of I did contact um, Lighthouse Solutions and I did ask them to give me a quote on an external hard drive. I did talk to Lisa Rushworth, who's very knowledgeable about this, and asked her what type of storage we would be looking at. She had kind of gone back and forth between, you know, maybe two terabytes, could be three terabytes, could be more. Well, for a two-terabyte external hard drive is $109 through Lighthouse. Or four terabytes is $139. So I would say you're getting a lot more storage for $30 more. So I would say.
Oh, too.
You know, one of the things we had talked about before was this external hard drive. And I, I always love an external hard drive for me personally. But we pay a ridiculous amount of money to Lighthouse for a cloud storage. And I don't know how many terabytes it is, but I remember it being a very large amount of money. Is there any way we can look into the cloud storage and see if we can utilize that? Because I hate to just reinvent the wheel.
Would you be able to manage it record retention wise through the cloud then? Or would that take extra work from? That, I think that was one of the eases of an external, actual physical.
I, I agree with you. I think it's the ease. But I also, I mean, from what I have heard from everybody is it takes a lot of storage for the video. Um, so that was why we kind of thought, well, go big. We could do the four terabytes and then we don't have to worry about dipping into anything or needing additional storage. Because what is stored on the cloud right now? Would it come down to, we don't have enough room for everything? So would, do you run the risk of losing something? I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not opposed to the hard drive. I just, I know that we pay a significant amount of money for that cloud storage. And I think it's utilized between, or fire and admin, because those, that system's linked.
I do know that you are correct on that.
Yeah.
Because I had to check on that earlier this year. So it is between fire and admin.
Yeah, I would just be curious. Because if we can just increase that, that would maybe be more feasible, maybe not.
Again, I think it comes to the record retention. Because the, the point was you have a little physical box that's dated 2023 or 2024, all your meetings. It's easily accessible for, for the office staff or Suzanne or when those records are no, when those videos, Zoom videos are no longer fall under our record retention schedule, they can easily be deleted off of that hard drive in one fell swoop. I don't know if the cloud, if, or if everything on the cloud can be organized that way? Or if it's organized by date or that would become a more complex process than just a little box.
On your computer.
But that, again, I, I guess maybe that's a question for Lynn and Suzanne.
Their comfortability.
Um, I just want to ensure. I think I'm better off making a motion for it now um, so that we can purchase it if they come back and say, yeah, you're better off having the external drive. That seems to make the most sense instead of having to wait another two weeks. Because starting next week when we go live with the website, we said we were going to start recording the movie, the meetings.
Yeah, it's really whatever their comfort zone is to comply with the record retention schedule.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to purchase a four-terabyte external hard drive cost of $139 from Lighthouse Solution Group.
Second.
Asherle?
Yes.
Swedek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
And the last thing on my agenda is I gave you all, Martha, you have one also, um, the CRA. I had spoken with Bethany last week and kind of was thinking out loud with what I thought might be a good fit for our township for the 15-year tax abatement zone. Here's what we, here's what we came up with that she thought was realistic. If there is under a $1 million investment, so cost to purchase, or I'm sorry, cost to build is under $1 million. One to five years, the first um, one through five years would be a 75% tax abatement. Years six through 15 would be a 50% tax abatement. If it is under a $2.5 million investment, the first one to five years is a 50% abatement. The following six to 15 years is a 40% tax abatement. And if it is over a $2.5 million investment, the first five years is a 50% abatement. Years six through 10 is a 40% abatement. And years 11 through 15 is a 30% tax abatement. That's what I came up with. I worked with Bethany because we altered one of those numbers um, to see. We feel that still is appealing to, you know, other businesses that want to come in, you know, the bigger businesses that are making the bigger investments. But it's also more appealing to, you know, the smaller mom and pop type of locations that are under a $1 million investment. Now, I will say also on this, we have not gotten the blessing from Brunswick Schools. The treasurer from Brunswick was going to bring this up to the board tonight at their meeting because anything over 50%, the school board needs to approve. So they seem to think it was realistic because we are talking about a relatively small amount of money. So he thought that most likely, you know, this would be something that we can work with or they may come back and say, instead of 75, what about 60% for the first five years? But that is what Bethany and I, Bethany and I came up with. That's the only part of it that we're waiting to hear what Brunswick City Schools has to say about it. But I wanted to know your thoughts on it.
I'd like to stew it over and compare it to the um, other analysises that Bethany gave us. You know, she gave us Granger um, and some other municipalities. And I just like, would, I would like to compare it to those.
And this is the opposite of the examples that she gave. Um, because the examples that she gave, and that's she said, I've never seen anybody that wants to incentivize a smaller investment. Um, but the ones that she gave us were, they were bigger tax breaks, bigger tax abatements for the higher the investment of, of the property. Do you have any thoughts, Jack?
You know where I was. I was already offered up to Drug, Drug Mart, so. Uh. As far as the numbers go, yeah, you know, if $100 million, you're not, not talking a whole lot of money, period. Uh. Again, my concern up there remains possibility of annexation by Brunswick. And you know, by not inviting these other big companies that could go along there and it just blends right in with Brunswick there. That uh, at some point they may say, well, we might as well take it.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Well, I thought a lot about that since that, that night um, of the possible annexation, which I, it could, it could always happen. That's always something that we're always kind of vulnerable with in that, in that corner up there. So I would think, not to rush this, but I would think um, the sooner we can all get on the same page and give Bethany something that she can work with, the better, um, better.
But I think that was one of the reasons with the, the cost of that property along there, that the trustees put that abatement in there to make it more attractive to a company of that size that would want to go there instead of them having, you know, Brunswick showing interest in it. Well, we'll annex it and then you come to this and you get our abatement, so.
So do you agree with this, this tiered system? Or do, would you like to see it that if you're spending more money and investment, you get a larger abatement? Because right now it is the opposite.
Right, I was okay with the way it was. But you know, if, if you guys want to look at this, I'm more than willing to look at it.
Because this was, I mean, as Drug Mart came in, Drug Mart would be in this last bucket.
Right.
Of a 50% abatement for the first five years, 40% for the next five and 30% for the final five years. And that was something that Bethany and I talked about. And I said, I feel like that still is incentive for them, but it's not that 50% break for 15 years.
Well, I thank you for putting it together. It definitely gives me a starting point, which I appreciate. Um, like I said, I just want to compare it to the other CRAs, but it's a great foundation.
Okay, let me know your thoughts then at the next meeting. Hopefully we can figure it out.
Do you have anything else, trustee Asherle?
I.
Monique, did you do the banner versus pop-up?
I did, she did.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I did. We're going with the free banner, not the pricey pop-up.
Okay, thank you.
I thought you would like free.
I just miss that with everything else. Thank you.
Pretty. I had a lot of motions for me.
Yeah. No, thank you.
Do you have anything else, trustee Asherle?
No.
Okay. Trustee Swedek?
Um, first, I would just like to mention that uh, a couple of the Inkley Police Officers responded to Metro Parks uh, over the past couple of days for an incident that Metro Parks sent a note to Chief Sentner. Um, they played a critical role in, in taking care of a situation there. And I'll let the chief speak to it when he gets back. But they recognized those two officers uh, for what they did. And I, I'm sure we'll hear more about it.
That's fantastic.
Then, I know we've had a lot of discussion on OHM. I want to offer a motion. I'd like to make a motion to accept the original submission of the OHM 2015 Township Comprehensive Plan Audit Recommendation Memorandum Received from OHM on July 5, 2022 and dated June 2022 with the associated audit survey results as a standalone document to be held for reference purposes.
Can I, can I read that really quick? Thank you. Second.
August, uh, Asherle?
Yes.
Swedek?
Yes.
Augustine?
No.
Do you have anything else, trustee Swedek?
That is all I have.
Very good. All right, I'm going to move right into mine so we can wrap up the night here. Um, at our last work session, we had talked about hiring Baker Dubukur, Back Wiley and Matthews. Um, at our last work session, we had talked about hiring Baker, Dubikar, Beck, Wiley, and Matthews um, with regard to the ARPA grant analysis, um, had conversation with him, which was really constructive. He's just a really great guy. Beck is our guy that we typically deal with there. And he said, um, that the OTA has agreed upon a rate of a hundred and forty dollars and that they typically don't exceed fifteen hundred dollars, which is why you see the motion here before you. Um, what he would like us to do is send a wish list of items that we would like to consider for the grant. He said that if we are looking at water, um, that is a guaranteed coverage. And, um, he has found that one large expenditure is much easier to navigate than micro expenditures. And, um, that was just based on, you know, conversation. He said, what are you thinking about? And I said, well, this is my thought, but I can't speak for the whole board. So, um, I sent over the resolutions that we have made up to this point with regard to the ARPA grant funds. And, um, he is taking a peek at them. I told him once we got the motion squared away, he could get back to me and let me know if there are any other resolutions that we need to identify in the interim period before we determine how we would like to use the funds. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to hire Baker, Dubikar, Beck, Wiley, and Matthews at a rate of a hundred and forty dollars an hour, uh, in not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars to assist in the process of utilizing the ARPA grant funds.
Second.
Asherel? I'm sorry, Jack, I'm sorry.
Now, the resolutions you sent were the ones relative to those required to utilize the funds in the manner for the standard?
No.
No.
It was to accept the funds.
Yeah, that you guys haven't done that.
Haven't used anything.
You only, you made a resolution last year, the initial tranche of funds. And then, once the standard rule changed in April, it came back with another required resolution to acknowledging the modifications in the original, um, terms of the funding. Those are the only two you made. The other ones are the ones I've forwarded to you guys several times, which was the impetus for hiring, uh, this firm.
All the Montville stuff.
So, so this guy will help us navigate that and make sure that we don't get involved in an audit.
That's exactly his job. That's why I sent him the resolutions that we've made up to this point, so he can help us with that process.
Well, it, it's also the proper method. By, by doing the standard allowance resolutions, it's going to remove a lot of the requirements that were previously in place, especially for larger projects.
That's, that was what I was asking. This is for the standard.
Yes, yes. This, uh, streamlines that process, um, primarily for those type of projects that might require prevailing wages, um, competitive bidding, and all, all those requirements. You still have to do it, but it gives more allowances for the township to, to, you know, um, make those type of motions and purchases without going through the federal government's procurement, um, policies that were in place before. It allows to do it more like we do it, not how the federal government does it. Does that explain it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Martha.
Uh, Asherel?
Yes.
Swadek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes. Um, we already dealt with the OHM stuff. I have on here YouTube. I had a resident reach out to me, and, um, it was kind of funny, actually. He said, you know, we're working so hard to put this YouTube channel together, and how many people are actually viewing it? And so I went and I did an average of how many people are using our YouTube channel. But Lisa Rushworth is running right now. The Rushworths are both running. Um, it's not actually our YouTube channel. And, uh, the ninety-five recordings at the time that I did it, and the four thousand seven hundred ninety-four views, the average is only fifty views per meeting. So, um, they kind of compared that to the analysis that keeps coming up about water. And the survey results show fifty-seven point three percent of the people that took the survey wanted to see water in Town Center, but we're making a YouTube channel just for fifty views a meeting. So I just wanted to share tho, those, those stats with you.
YouTube's free, water's not.
Well, we have a grant, so it would be free if we do it the right way. Um, the Garden Club does a fantastic job. I don't know if you've looked at Town Center. They just do an amazing job. At the Hinkley Historical Society, and here in front of the administration building, as well as Veteran Memorials Park, they have asked us, um, to purchase some mums for the fall. They had some that popped back up from last year and some that did not. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve expenditures on behalf of the Hinkley Garden Club not to exceed a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Second.
Asherel?
Yes.
Swadek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes. Um, just an FYI for all the public, I just put it in my trustee corner as well in the Hinkley Record. Um, we have an informational meeting open up to citizens that the Cleveland Metro Parks and Medina County Parks will have here at Town Hall on October nineteenth at six thirty PM. And that will outline each one of those, um, systems, uh, abilities for preservation options as far as land donation. So I wanted to share that with you guys again. And, um, I'm sure you both saw the email today, and it was already on my agenda, but we lost a, um, phenomenal man who served Hinkley Township for over twenty years. His name was, um, Ron Rose. He served with the zoning commission as well as trustee. And, um, I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge his service to Hinkley Township and, um, ask the trustees if they would be willing to, uh, include police and fire and service and a professional if the family so chose to do a professional for their services.
Absolutely. He was a, he was a good friend of my wife, and he was a great guy for this town. He did a lot of things here. He was well-respected. We lost a good man.
I agree.
Mm-hmm.
Trustee Asherel, do you agree as well?
Yes, I absolutely agree.
Very good. I will reach out to the family and let them know that's something we did for trustee Shulte as well. And I think it, it speaks volumes to the service and commitment that those people have garnered for our town. Um, also had a resident reach out about a gentleman named Robert Johnson. He was a, um, veteran of the Korean War and a member of the Brunswick American Legion Post nine, uh, two-three-four, as well as the VFW Post nine-five-two-oh. He was noted for his twenty years of service to the Veterans of Hinkley Cemetery in faithfully marking their graves with flags, um, and the appropriate bronze marker on Memorial Day. So I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge his service to Hinkley Township as well.
And, um, I just wanted to add, and I'm not sure if you saw that at the bottom of Lynn's email. Um, he had asked that you share about the, um, Celebration of Life ceremony with everyone.
I think he was asking how we could go about doing that. Um, but yeah, that's a good point. Thank you. If anybody would like to attend trustee, former trustee Ron Rhodes's Celebration of Life, it is this Sunday, September eleventh, and I don't...
At the VFW.
Very bottom, bear with me, I'm scrolling.
Medina VFW.
Yes, at the, at the VFW Post five-one-three-seven in Medina. Um, and that will be at three PM on Sunday. Thank you for that catch. And finally, I have two more things. Uh, special thanks to Brian Lacco, who's been running our website for us for more years than I can count. And, um, I, I think he's excited for us to move forward into a more modern website and, um, maybe to have some more spare time on his hands. But he's just, he doesn't even live in Hinkley full-time, and he is very amenable and accessible to us. So I want to thank Brian Lacco for his service in that. And, um, lastly, just wanted to see if we could have further conversation about work sessions. I, I'm actually just going to ask that we cease them, um, because I, I can't fit them into my schedule at this moment. If I can, after I adapt my new schedule, I can certainly let you know and update you.
Is there anything to preclude us from continuing to meet if you're not there? Is that okay?
Um, there's nothing that precludes you. I just thought maybe we could work together on some form of way to work forward together.
You can't do the night either, though, right?
Well, I'm just, I've got to be, I'm adapting a new schedule. So until I adopt it, I, it will be a very difficult task for me to determine times that are allotted. Um, in the past, some of the trustee boards have done a special meeting right before the regular meeting at like a five-thirty time, so that they're meeting once instead of multiple times.
Yeah, Martha had mentioned that to me, and I'll... I just don't, I think that elongates the meeting to have a work session right before the meeting. Um, I had said, you know, maybe in alternate weeks, doing something like that, so that... There's so many times that we have work session meetings that we say, all right, let me look into this. Let me, let me get a little bit more information, and I'll have it ready for the next meeting. I still see a lot of value in the work session meetings. I understand you have schedule conflicts now, trying to adapt to a new schedule. I would say, and I think it's already in the paper for the, for the thirteenth, for next week, to still have that one, um, because that's in the paper, and we had already said that we were going to anyways. So I would say keep the thirteenth. My schedule may be changing also, um, in October, so I may need to move to more, um, evening meetings as well. So we can talk about that as it, as it comes. But I still see the value in the work session meetings. I think that we accomplish a lot in them.
I'll still meet with myself, you know?
Well, I think probably the best bet is for you guys to meet on the fifteenth, and then we can come back in the beginning of October and see where we're at.
The thirteenth.
Does that sound like a fair, or sorry, the thirteenth?
Yes, so we will still have the thirteenth meeting, um, and then figure out where we go from there.
Perfect. That is all I have. Martha?
Can I ask a question? What else is on the wish list other than?
We haven't discussed anything else. I was just providing the information that I had garnered last year, secondary to the fact that that money could only be utilized for infrastructure. Um, and then we got the second part of the funds this year, and we looked at the survey results. And to me, it, it's a no-brainer to use it, utilize it for water. That's just my opinion. I'm sure there are a million other ways we could use it, but, um, you know, I just...
The survey also said fifty-six percent of the people wanted sewers, and we know that's impossible.
Well, it, it's not impossible, but it's not covered by the, the grant funding last time I checked. I did get a, I did get a text from, um, Mike Bahari today, and this is his water filter after one month. I mean, I think that if we look into water, even just to the police and fire department, which fits our budget at eight hundred thousand dollars, which was the estimate we were given last year, um, I, I think that that would be a feasible thing for, for us as a township. That's just my opinion.
I've been thinking about a couple of things that we could do. My wish list is starting to grow. Um, Martha had mentioned a couple of months ago, and I started thinking about it. I have friends that have taken advantage of some of the grants that the government's, um, putting out there for solar, converting to solar, and if we could convert some of these township buildings to solar, would that would save us, especially with the cost of electric? I mean, my, my electric bills at home are getting pretty bad, and I don't even have air conditioning, so I can only imagine. Um, and then also, you know, like, you can buy, you can sell your excess energy. Um, so I've been getting a lot more information about that. But then I also started researching and seeing, you know, I think a lot of the water issues, from what I've heard, is the aquifer is, is, it's a bad aquifer, right, where it's getting depleted. So I started doing some research about how to replenish the aquifer. And that might be something that, instead of the great expense of running water, because these bids are a year old, and it, when we last talked about it, it was like, where is it going to be? Is it going to be in the center of town, or is it going to be the fire department, the service department? Because we don't have enough for both. So what if we actually went back and solved the problem by, by replenishing an aquifer that is going to take a fraction of the money that it would cost to, to run the water through, through the center of town? So those are some things that I have been thinking about. I don't know what Jack is thinking about, and I don't know if Melissa has any other ideas, but that's what I've started brainstorming on.
I'm sorry, I just thought there was a wish list. Thank you for that, though.
That's my wish list.
Well, solar is definitely, uh, you know, that would be probably my second. But I have had so many people in Town Center complain about their water quality. Um, I think the fact that we don't have water suppression systems in any of our businesses in Town Center is a scary thought. Um, and that all of our department heads have asked for water in Town Center. That's a, that's a viable reason to move forward, on top of all the other.
But that's a lot of money for a few customers.
Mm-hmm.
Now, that's, that's a thing to me.
Well, when I talk to those people, not just the people that, that own the businesses, but the people that own the buildings, they're spending so much money right now on trying to make sure that their water, water quality meets EPA standards, that they would hook up in a heartbeat.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to bring this up for discussion. I just thought.
Yes, you did.
I thought there was a list that we weren't aware of. Another time.
Thank you. I appreciate your questions always. They're always very good. Um, do you want to?
I need to move some money.
Yeah, I see that. There's, that's a very large resolution.
Yeah, yeah.
So moved?
Yeah, well, yeah, due to a number of, of different things, increasing in cost. Um, I would request the trustees approve a motion to reallocate the following inter-fund transfers. Twenty thousand dollars from, I'm not going to read these fund numbers, but they will be in the, uh, they will be journalized. I'm just going to say the fund line, because that's what you guys are primarily familiar with. Uh, twenty thousand dollars from buildings to salaries for trustees. And, um, there's going to be, these, these two first inter-fund transfers are required since with the ARPA funds, the second tranche, the township budget has exceeded ten million dollars, which means that there are statutory increases in both trustee salaries and fiscal office salaries that's based on an annual budget for the township. Now, they may go down again next year, but right now, as soon as an amended certificate comes in, those have to statutorily be moved up into the, uh, next tier of salary range. Second one is five thousand dollars from proper, uh, general fund property insurance premiums to salaries township fiscal officer. Next one is fifteen hundred dollars from Roden Bridge principal payments to Roden Bridge workers' compensation. Five hundred dollars from Roden Bridge other insurance benefits to Roden Bridge Vision. Five thousand dollars from Roden Bridge contracted services to Roden Bridge Utilities. Five thousand dollars from zoning other salaries to zoning other professional and technical services. Five thousand dollars from police training services to police workers' compensation. And forty thousand dollars from police buildings and ten thousand dollars from police operating supplies. Uh, no, I'm sorry. Forty thousand dollars total from police buildings with ten thousand dollars to go to police operating supplies and thirty thousand dollars to go to police motor vehicles. And that is to, um, prepare a purchase order for the two new interceptors that were approved on the twenty-third. Does anybody have any questions?
So moved.
Second.
Asherel?
Yes.
Swadek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
And then the fund status is currently at seven million, five hundred and two thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents, of which pooled investments is one million, sixty-eight thousand, seventy-nine dollars and seventy-six cents. And primary checking is six million, four hundred and thirty-four dollars, three hundred, or four hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and two dollars and one cent. And just for anybody's curious, um, our amended certificate came in at ten million, two hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Uh, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of forty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and eight cents.
Second. Second.
Seconded by Asher?
Asher?
Yes.
Swedek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes. All right. Anyone from the audience have anything that they would like to present?
Ms. Richard again. I have a quick one. With respect to the tabs on the website, alphabetical order, that's very important. Subconsciously, we all look, whether you have three items on a list or 20 items on a list, if they're in alphabetical order, it's very easy to go through them. We learned this, well, I learned it in first grade, but nowadays, kids must learn this before kindergarten.
Particularly if you're not familiar with any hierarchy or...
Our brains just work in alphabetical order.
Thank you.
Terry Walrath, 3150 Hinkley Hills Road. I was very glad to see the tribute to Ron Rhodes on the agenda tonight. Ron Rhodes was one of the finest public servants I've ever known. He did a lot of good for Hinkley Township as he saw that good to be. As Jack said, Hinkley's lost a great man. It was my privilege to have served with him when I was on the Zoning Commission, and it was my honor to call him my friend. And I hope the minutes of this meeting will be forwarded to his family.
Thank you. That's a good suggestion, Mr. Walrath. Thank you for your kind words. Anyone else?
To Terry's point, it might be hard to believe, but Ron and I were actually friends, and I had a really nice talk with him about, I don't know, two weeks before he passed away, and he, and Terry probably has seen, you know, seen him through his latest struggle, but he was uplifting and cheerful and positive and just a very brave man. So we have lost a very fine, fine gentleman and friend.
Our condolences go out to his family. Thank you, Martha. Anyone else? All right. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn at 8:03 PM.
Second.
Seconded by Asher. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for being here tonight.
And I'm sorry for all of your loss. That knew Ron so well and thought so highly of him.
He's a character.
Thanks for coming out.
Flabbergasted when you texted us, Martha.
Yeah. Would you guys sign that? That is the appropriations you approved on the 23rd. And I guess you can sign this one, since you didn't change the one.
This one is the one.
Yes. That's wishful thinking.
I just want to sign the one that I have seen from.
Yeah, I had asked Jack this morning if he knew which property you guys were looking into, because I went back in my old emails, and I found we had hired Trina to help us take down the house on Ullane Court.